On to order. Can we please rise for our flag salute? I will give the honor Chief Cahill because he's more senior than Chief Chief Buster. Chief Cahill, please lead us.
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, indivisible and just as strong.
Okay, before we before we begin tonight, I'd like everyone to take a moment of silence in memory of a horrible tragedy in Texas. Thank you. And that's what children should be able to do.
Exactly.
Lisa, roll call, please. Commissioner Kreebel?
Here.
Commissioner Langria?
Here.
Mayor Holtzman?
Here.
Pursuant to the Open Publics Meeting Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. Tonight, our agenda is going to be a little different. We have three gentlemen that will be sworn in, two police will be promoted, and we have a new hire for our fire department. So we are going to do that at the very beginning of our meeting. And then right after that, we are going to go into an executive session. So anybody in the public that's here or on Zoom will have to leave this room or Zoom until we get done the executive session, and then we will continue with our workshop. So. And before I forget, we have a distinguished guest in our audience who I love. Actually, I call my boyfriend, and I probably shouldn't. Mayor Becker from Marquette. He's a wonderful man, and he reached out to me right after we got in office, and he's there for me for anything, and we became friends as well.
Good sounding word for Holmes.
He is. He's a great man. You're a great man. Because you have a grateful man behind you. I had to say that. I'm sorry. I had to say that. Sorry. Okay, so the first resolution. Do I have a motion for Resolution 2022-172, appointing Patrick Hiltner to Police Lieutenant?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
I'm going to think about it. Where is he? Yes. Remember going back to Christmas Eve when we were figuring things out? That's six years ago. Scary, isn't it? You're a good guy, Pat. Yes. Next resolution is 2022-173, and that's appointing Brian Garreria to Police Lieutenant. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Another great man on our police force. Where is he? There he is. Next is Resolution 2022-174, hiring Bruno, and I'm Italian. Mig. Midjoea. My maiden name is Macanata. Try to say that, salt spell. Midjoea. I love it. Must be Sicilian. The firefighter for the city of Vetna. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Now, we will do the swearing in. Are you going to stop sneezing?
No, yeah.
Okay, so Commissioner Kreebel is the Commissioner of Public Safety. He will be doing the swearing in.
Yes.
You will do one at a time, correct?
Yes.
You want Lance and I to stand down?
Sure.
Very good. Here.
Just remember that.
Hi, Brian Barrett. I am Brian Barrett. I solemnly swear, I solemnly swear, I support the Constitution of the United States, I support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of the Union. There are two faith allegiance that I will. Same as the government established, and the government established in the United States, in the United States, and in this state, and in this state. For the people, under the former Trump people, and that I will faithfully, and equally, and partially, and justly, and partially, and justly, perform all the duties of the office of, or perform all the duties of, so, intended of police, and police, like May 26, 2022. May 26, 2022, according to the best of my skills and ability, according to the best of my skill and ability.
Congratulations.
Lieutenant Roger Fielder? Horrible. He's taller than me. I, I. I solemnly swear, I solemnly swear, I support the Constitution. The United States, and the Constitution of the State of the Union. There are two faith, there are two faith, allegiance to same, and government established, and the United States, and in this state, and in this state. For the people. Faithfully, and partially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of, of police, and police, like May 26, 2022. According to the best of my skills and ability.
You guys have the same signatures.
I'm a judge.
I love it.
Good job.
He's a pretty girl.
I gotta see the pictures.
Why don't you guys speak?
I support the Constitution, and the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of the Union. There are two faith. Allegiance to the same, and allegiance to the same, government established, in the United States, in the United States, and in this state, in this state. For the people, and for the people, and that. Partially adjusted, and all the duties of the office of, all the duties of the office, firefighter, firefighter, protective. Our, our five dash thirty. Please, please, may, may hurt, may, may hurt, something, where you possess my skills and ability, where you possess. The dots.
Yeah.
This is the, yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
I need to steal them. She has to steal them.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Can we move the question?
Yes. Want me to go into the executive session? They're talking.
Right after you. Might as well just let them know. They all gotta go.
Sorry, I can tell. Ready?
Yeah, just go into.
Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act permits the discussion of certain matters within executive session as an exception to certain divisions provisions of said law. Preventer City Board of Commissioners wishes to discuss certain matters which qualify as exceptions in executive session. No action binding upon the Board of Commissioners will be taken when in executive session and the discussion conducted in closed session will be disclosed to the public when legally permitted, and when the public interest no longer be served by keeping such matters confidential. Matters to be discussed are potential litigation. Yeah.
Department head reports this week, nor do we have capital discussions. First thing we will be voting on are.
Mayor, sorry to interrupt.
That's right.
Mark should give a little dissertation.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we did speak about some pre-litigated matters that. Warning some.
Mark, use the.
We are, we discussed some pre-litigation matters in closed session, which ended at 5:55 PM, and there was no action taken.
Thank you. I'm moving away. This is the sneezy section over here. It's just, it's just a fever.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes, sorry.
So now we will continue with the workshop portion of the meeting, then we will go into the part, our regular meeting where we vote. The first thing is we will have, we will be voting on minutes of April 14th, April 28th, and May 5th. I am going to, when it comes to our voting part, I'm going to do each one separately because two of them I have to stay. All right, guys?
Sure.
We have no ordinance introduction. We do have public hearing and adoption on two ordinances that were discussed in detail at the last meeting. The first one is 2022-008, and that's amending Chapter 179, properly vacant and foreclosing. And that is per legislation by the state on January 18th, 2022. The next is 2022-009, and that's amending and supplementing Chapter 114, the fee schedule, and this is the fee schedule of the code department relating to plumbing, building plumbing, solar, et cetera. And you guys discussed it in detail, so I'm going to move on. We then have resolutions. First one is 2022-175, and that is a tax abatement for 206 North Surrey. 2022-176 is a tax abatement for 208 North Surrey. 2022-177 is a tax abatement for 328 North Dudley. Excuse me, the next 2022-178, and that is authorizing the hire of employees, part-time, temporary EMTs for the city of Vetna. I have a quick question, Chief Cahill is not here. Tim, those four people, I think, are they all going to be on the beach?
Not at the same time, but they are all.
But they're all there for the beach.
Yeah, rotations for the heavy weekends.
Tennis courts to another recreation areas, just in case.
So it's recreation, yeah, and the beach, great.
It worked out really great. It's a low-cost way to get first responders there very quickly.
Yep. Thank you. Next is 2022-179, authorizing the hire of Edward Logue as part-time employee for the city of Vetna. He will be stationed at our side door when, where people come in as our reader and information person. The next is 2022-180, and that's awarding contract for Ski Beach Control for Waterway Station Pump to ABS Electric, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $39,855.
Yep, renovations to the sewer pump station up there by Ski Beach.
The next is 2022-181, approving 2022, 2023 liquor license for the Vetna Theater. The next 2022-182, approving 2022, 2023 liquor license for Byright Liquors. The next is 2022-183, approving 2022-2023 liquor license for the community liquor. The next is 2022-184, approving 2022, 2023 liquor renewal for North Beach Liquors. The next is 2022-185, approving 2022-2023 liquor license, you know, for Blooms. I'm not getting into that name. The next is Resolution 2022-186, and that's authorizing a Halloween Fest, which is bringing back, Chief Foster is bringing back the Halloween parade on the Boar Wall. It is scheduled right now for October 22nd. I put a little star next to this with a heart because I really love that idea. So anyway, I just thought I'd let you know what I knew.
Got it. Star, heart.
Star, heart. 2022-187, authorizing a refund for tax homestead credit. 2022-188 is amending the recognition clause of the current collective negotiation agreement with the Teamsters. It's accuracy on who's covered and who isn't.
That's removing a craft.
Craft title.
Craft, please.
Yeah.
It's going to allow us to bring electrician in through the.
Perfect.
Good.
Then we will have approval of our bills and payrolls for this period, and we have on our discussion items, two items, am I correct?
Yes.
The lead, is this you, Lance?
One, yes, I would say yes.
Okay, so go for it.
So the lead ordinance, I've been talking about this for probably the last three or four months. The state of New Jersey, in its infinite wisdom, has decided to require every municipality to remove and replace any, any lead or galvanized pipe that runs water from our service mains, which are not lead or galvanized, to your homes. They're mandating it over a 10-year period. Our estimates through our Public Works and City Engineer Offices, that's going to be about a $60 to $65 million expense.
$60 to $65 million.
Million dollars.
State, in date, state pay.
Yeah.
It falls on the municipality.
Falls on the municipality. And we've already begun grant writing for that. I've talked to the, to the DEP Commissioner, Sean LaRouette. We'll actually be having a meeting with him in this building in two weeks. With regard to a couple of things that will be high on my discussion items. It, it, it's frustrating because they're forcing us to do this all the way to the house.
Right.
This is not just to the curb line, which is normally our requirement.
Right, so there's residential.
Right to the home.
So there's residential repairs that have to be.
Landscaping. Anything that's in that way, we're going to have to.
Replace.
And we're looking at an ordinance that will allow us to go on to their property because right now we're not allowed to do that.
Right.
So we're, I saw draft of it today. We'll probably put that on for next month, start moving that forward just so it's in place. You know how many housing units we have? We have over 5,500 parcels in the city.
5,500 parcels.
So there's probably almost 80, 90% of that is going to require, and it's, and it's mainly the galvan, the lead gooseneck and the galvanized line that runs to the house. The state has determined that galvanized is lead. To me, my table of charts doesn't tell me that galvanized is lead, but apparently they consider it lead.
Chart?
Element chart. Periodic chart.
Yeah, exactly.
But.
I read that it.
Their determination. So here, here's my biggest question mark for this. The state sets a threshold of when you have lead contaminant in your water. It's 15 parts per million. Vetna has been below two for the last, Ernie, 15 years. We haven't even broached two parts per billion. If I said million before, it's parts per billion. We haven't even passed two, and their threshold is 15. Granted, no lead is good. Understand that. Then don't set your threshold at 15 if you wanted it too.
So, so we can't be faced, the only municipality faced with twice our operating yearly budget expense in, that is, that is fighting. That had, so is there, is there any other towns that are looking at creating, fighting, pushing back on that?
I've asked Margate, and they're, they're pushing back as well. Here, here's the other thing they required us to do. We're sidestepping it a little bit. They asked us to send certified mail letters to each of the owners of property that could have potential galvanized or lead pipe going into their home.
Right.
That cost, we thought originally was 20 grand, was more like 40? $45,000 just to mail certified receipts to people. So we're just going to put it in your, your water bill.
Right.
Sorry, we're not spending $45,000 to make sure you get a letter.
Right.
Get in your bill.
That people pack.
Right. And we did draft a letter.
Some might not.
So that the state came up with a letter that we had to put in this notification. We attached a letter that the three of us either have signed or will sign that explains what, basically what I'm saying right now. Look, guys, this is not a panic mode. This is being mandated on us. Our water is very good here. We have very low levels of lead. This is an over precautionary measure that the state is forcing us to do. Newark has issues, so they're, they're making their issue everybody's issue.
Yeah.
So we're going to have to do it eventually. We're going to try and get out in front of the game and get money from the federal government to help with this. We've heard Jim Ruttella, our grant coordinator, is already drafting those grants now. We'll probably be passing resolutions to submit those in the next few months.
Just seems like that there would be some other fight in the, in the other municipalities in New Jersey that would at least have the highest offenders done first. Just seems logical of those.
You know, the people that can verify and test, and that the ones like ourselves who do have safe quality water. And here's the.
Later in the game.
You just can't say, well, that one's not lead. That one's not galvanized. You have to do test pits and prove that they are not galvanized or lead. So. All right, as, as homes are renovated or reconstructed, or even new homes are built in the city.
Right.
Our Public Works and Sewer and Water Department require them to, homeowners to pay for that new saddle or the, the remove the lead. What do you call it, Ernie? I'm sorry. What's the, the saddle thing that comes off? That's, we have them replace that.
Right.
Somewhat saving us, but.
I'm going to reach out to the president of the league.
Okay.
Of mayors.
We've reached, it's, it's already law.
No, I know, but I want to see that smayers across the entire state.
They, they've already passed the.
Where they, you know, where they're with it. You know, we could say Margate's pushing back, but go across the entire state and see, see.
Lanning City was unaware of it.
It's a heavy lift.
There, it's going to be worse.
Yeah.
Worse. So.
Okay, the next one is open container ordinance. Is this you?
Yeah, in a way, Chief Buster and I can comment on it. So in the course of having other liquor licenses being renewed in the area, we've come across an ordinance that we need to update our ordinance on open containers around outdoor dining. So around restaurants that have outdoor dining. We want to increase the capacity and make sure that they are working within the legal, an ordinance that reflects that, that open containers can be used.
Okay, there's, we have a draft of.
We have a draft.
Do that next month.
Put that out for. It's pretty, it's really a, a maintenance issue.
Yeah, it's a little clause in there. I read through it today. It seemed appropriate.
Right.
All right.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Lisa.
All right. So we'll move on.
Yep.
So next is our public portion. This public portion is anyone in the public that would like to speak on anything that we just discussed that we will be voting on. There will be another public portion at the end if someone has something totally unrelated to the voting part of our meeting. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone here in the chambers? Tim, anybody in Zoom?
No, there's no one in Zoom.
Nobody in Zoom? Okay. All right, this is only for the things we discussed. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, you have to come up to the front and.
Give your name and address.
Give your name and address, even though we may know. Yes.
Paula DeLuca, 110 North Derry. Is there any estimate as to year of construction of a house where the access to the house might have this lead problem?
That's how, that's how we determine how many properties. Ernie and his staff and Ed and his staff have gone through that, and that's how we determine how many we can, we're estimating are going to require that.
Is there kind of a year that's an estimated cutoff, like if a house went in in 2000?
Ernie?
Clay pipes got replaced with P B.
1989. You're welcome. That was easy.
Thanks. Thanks, Ernie.
Thank you, Ernie. Anyone else? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to close public portion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting and call to order the regular portion of our meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First is the approval of the minutes for April 14th, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Abstain. Next are the minutes of April 28th, 2022 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Next, with the approval of the minutes of May 5th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Abstain. We do not have any ordinances to introduce tonight, so the next thing is a public hearing. The public hearing is on ordinance 2022-008, and that is the amending Chapter 178. Do I have a motion to open to the public here?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public like to speak on this? See anyone? Do I have a motion to close the public here?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the adoption of 2022-008. Do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion to adopt ordinance 2022-008?
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. The next is a public hearing on 2022-009, the ordinance supplementing, amending and supplementing Chapter 114, the fee schedule. Do I have a motion to open to the public here?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone here like to speak on that?
It's good.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public here?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the adoption of the ordinance 2022-009. Do I have a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Think a motion to adopt ordinance 2022-009?
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Next, we will adopt resolutions by consent, Resolutions 2022-0175 through 2022-188. Do I have a motion to adopt these ordinances by consent?
Motion to adopt ordinance, Resolutions 2022-175 through 188 by consent.
Did I say? Did I say?
You had a, you had a zero in there or something.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Our CFO, can you please give us our bills and payroll for this period?
Yes, uh, the bill list for this period is five million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, five eighty-seven, forty-three. And the, uh, payroll for this period was five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two fifty-nine, eighty-nine cents.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve bills and payrolls stated from our CFO?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Uh, do we have any commissioner, uh, reports or comments tonight?
Not really. Just up to the windows are due tomorrow for headquarters and toward that today with, with Ed. It's looking great.
It's a great design. Just need windows.
Yeah.
See windows.
Just finish up. Installation was put in the other day, so it's all spraying.
Yep.
So the building sound, it's just.
Wonderful.
Just, just the supply chain issue.
Yeah.
And our farmer's market begins tomorrow.
Begins tomorrow. Yeah, farmer's market. Begins tomorrow.
Gets bigger and better every year. Thank you and all the volunteers.
It's a great farmer.
It's wonderful.
It is. Also, other events, you got them?
Uh, well, this, uh, for Memorial Day, I did reach out to the, um, lead of the Vettner VFW double check-in. Um, and they, they're, they're just very short staffed, so they said, um, they to direct people to long for, um, for any Memorial Day, um, services or events. So we do not have anything because the VFW is the lead in that. But what we do do every year is we do do an official opening of the beach where, um, on Headquarters Beach, we have a very large ribbon that we put from the lifeguard boat to the lifeguard stand. And we cut the ribbon to officially open. Yes, somebody once said the beach is always open. Yes, it is. To officially open the season of protected beaches. But if that one.
Right.
Um, last year I actually got a boat ride out into the water too. I think Lansing Tim was hoping that I would fall out of the boat, but I didn't. But, um.
We've rigged that boat. There's always next time.
Right, so.
We rigged the boat this year.
We get a nice amount of people. Be nice to have more people out there because it is the official opening and it's something we started when we got in office and we've done it every year. So, um, and other than that, I don't think.
Ten AM Saturday.
Ten AM Saturday. Um, another announcement is this year will be the fiftieth anniversary of the city run.
Right.
The one mile, I know it's under you, but.
I'm sorry.
The city run. Um, it's a one mile run. It's family. It's a lot of like moms, dads, children, grandparents. And they usually have, you know, hot dogs and water. We give medals for second, third place. And we get a gr- pretty good turnout every year, but this year it's the fiftieth anniversary. So we, at the end, we are doing fireworks.
We're still working on some of the logistics on the approvals. So we're not ready to roll that out a hundred percent.
Hopefully go fireworks. And that is always the day before Fourth of July. So it's July third. So if that all flows through, hopefully that happens because that'll be exciting because nobody does fireworks on the third of July. So, um.
There's also the Kenny Willen fire.
Right.
This weekend. It's, that's right. It's on Sunday.
Yes.
Kenny Willen, the run is, what time does that start? Nine?
It's nine AM.
Nine AM, and that is a huge, huge event.
We'll make an official announcement once and if, when, when and if the fireworks get approved and let's go through.
Yes, me, you know, about money. So I said, I figured it was.
Right, right.
Been a little bit out of the loop with other things, but, um.
You have concerts Saturday too.
Concert start, yes.
Yeah, Newport Avenue. It's a country band.
I like country.
They'll start, and there'll be food trucks there. There'll be a beer garden there. There'll be everything Newport Avenue and Beach.
Great.
Yeah. Saturday, seven.
And, and we advertise everything.
We do. It's on our website. It's on our social media and everything with that. So.
So that's good. Okay. Did you have anything?
Um, just some update, uh, really two brief things. Well, I see, uh, Brenda and Ed here on our conversations. Uh, the Park Mobile time is being worked on for the business districts to be limited to a four hour. There's just some communication between Park Mobile. It's new to us. So we have, uh, staff working on it to make the business districts a more turner, a faster turnaround and not the ability to have nine hours of parking there. That suffice to say what we're working on, chief. And then the other thing is, um, that we had a discussion about, uh, Newport Avenue. Newport Avenue is gonna continue to be one way in the direction that it's, uh, that it's, uh, that it is now. It's in sync with the city in terms of the north, of the, I guess, east west, east west, or north south, or south. Um, it also doesn't qualify as, uh, as a, a two-way road with parking, but it may qualify as a one-way road with parking on both sides. So we're looking at that in a way to add probably four to eight somewhere in that neighborhood of spots on the Margate side of Newport Avenue. We're also gonna increase, um, the signage to make it more visible. So we have blue key signs. Except for that, we're not closing off the road. So that would be the only thing that would really stop people from seeing it. So we're still hopeful that, uh, during the season, that that, um, a parking lot will be utilized, but in good faith, we are gonna monitor the, the use of it over time and compare it to other years so that we can make that decision. But, um, everybody that we've talked to from public safety to fire, to police, all agree that this is something that should be cleaned up and corrected to the ordinance. And also, um, it, it also falls in line with, um, just, uh, our insurances. That's what it is. So there's. Yes. Yeah. So, um, that's all I, that's all I have. Um, maybe else.
Now, yep, one last, one last thing. We have that lot on Vettner Avenue. We have a land sale on five thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, four PM. It's an online.
No, it'll be here.
Live, live and in person. You guys will be running that auction. At least we'll be running it. Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in minimum bid.
Right.
For the property.
Yeah, so we'll get that out and advertise. I do see Mr. Santoro. He did, I did speak to him. He's a risk management consultant in the area. He wanted to say something.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Just, just say your name, Rick, and your address.
My name is Rick Santoro. I'm a resident real for North Washington Avenue and Vettner. I've lived here for eight years this time. And prior, I lived here six more years in addition to that. Um, I, I work for the CRDA. I run the special improvement division. And in addition to that, I'm a businessman. I own my own business. I'm a risk management and a security expert, a nationally recognized, uh, risk management expert. I've testified and given testimony in numerous high-profile cases, the MGM mass shooting, condo collapse in Philadelphia, um, fatal accidents in Port Authority, Authority and other places around, around the country. Um, and I do that as my business. Um, I heard about the controversy and the issues relating to the one-way and two-way designation. Um, and I strongly support the decision that's made by, uh, taking the advice of the police chief, the fire chief, the city engineer. Because based on my experience, I don't believe that Vettner should go against any established ordinances or rules because we're gonna jeopardize our stature with the JIF, the joint insurance fund. We, we are fortunate to be allowed in there. Not all municipalities can participate in that. And if we breach, if we allow, um, uh, this to operate in a manner that is not approved or is illegal, um, we own all claims, all liability, anything that would be associated with an accident there from a kid on a skateboard to, um, anything that could happen there. So although it may be an uncomfortable decision for local businesses or others that may have to drive around the block of park, I absolutely support the decision because we cannot afford, we can't get forward afford to get kicked out of the JIF, and we can't afford to own claims where we have no insurance to pay, to pay claims.
Right.
So, so, uh, you know, I, I, as a taxpayer here and as a, as a businessman with some expertise in that, I just, I, I strongly support being compliant and being in line with, with, uh, what we're, uh, allowed to do by law and ordinance, but we shouldn't mediate from that because it puts us in a very precarious situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
And to be clear, the, the change that occurred however many years ago was not done by ordinance.
No.
It was just done.
We're now in compliance.
We're now in compliance with, with what it was done.
Okay.
Well, ironically, I've lived here my whole life and I always went, I always use that street the way it's gonna be done now. Well, I've never used it the other way. I, I, I just, I don't know. It's, I've always used it like it was a one-way.
Right.
Because it's so narrow.
Yep. It is. All right, that's all I have, but thank you.
You're done, comment?
Yep.
Okay, so we are done our comments. So now I will open it up to the public. This is where anybody would like to say anything. You can, you have to come up to the mic, say your name and your address and, um, whether you have a comment or whatever. So do I have a motion to open the public comment?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
My name is Greg Michelle. I'm in the five oh three North Victoria Avenue. I've lived here since nineteen ninety. I bought my house in ninety-seven. I've lived here since nineteen ninety. Would pay taxes, payments, and city Vettner. Like to address the overnight parking, commercial parking situation here. I've been parking my van, which is just a commercial van. I got commercial tags, uh, probably gross weight under five thousand. I've been parking outside my house for thirty-one years. Never had a problem. Basically in front of my driveway, maybe. I get a ticket deal a night for thirty-five dollars because somebody parked their vehicle in the city, probably that the people don't like it. They called up and gave him a commercial, a ticket for his commercial deal. I'm outside on the street. He wanted around the whole city. He started picking out cars, commercial vehicles and dropped the list off to the Vettner City Police. They got, they went out and gave these pick, people tickets. And, um, that would be, I, and I got a ticket also. So I'd just like to know it. Then what I did is I Googled it and Chief Biagi, before he came up with this thing about the overnight parking with your ordinance. Yes, we do need an ordinance for commercial overnight parking, but it should be for RVs. It should be for winnow bavures, for certain gross weight vehicles, not for somebody that's a homeowner.
Right.
And that's my livelihood. The reason why I park on the street, my wife's got a bad, big, bad lane. She likes to park on the driveway, T-shirt for her to get inside the house. Okay? And what I'm trying to say is when Biagi talked about it, since he retired, I put on the back purpose, so to say. Uh, he was talking about giving out, uh, well, uh, to one household, uh, a parking, no fee parking permit.
Right.
For guys like us to park out on the street. I'm all for that ordinance, but thirty-one years I've been parking here. I never got a ticket. The first night, they gave me a ticket for thirty-five dollars. I parked out there the next night too, because I'm gonna fight the ticket. They come and give me a ticket for a warning. I think I was supposed to get awarded the first night, the ticket the second night. Right? I think that sounds most a bit.
Right.
But Biagi, when he says, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a loading stack for having conflict. It should be tweaked. It's gotta be tweaked, he said when he was in office. And he says, uh, and what, what we usually do, he said, we could blanket the whole city with tickets. I know you could. He said, what we usually do is you give a warning at first.
Right.
And take it from here. So now I've been parking in my driveway and I've been living here for thirty-one years. I'm a political community. I don't bother nobody. I pay my tax. I don't, I've never been late with my taxes, never.
Right.
And I'm just asking, maybe you guys.
We need to re- revisit. So we talked about this today. So the, so the, you're right, the ordinance needs to be tweaked. In fact, we think that putting five thousand pounds as a limit, you mentioned, would be, would be a cleaner way of doing it. So that, um, so the people that, rather than create a whole orchestration of finding people and giving them permits. So, so a vehicle like yours, if it's under, uh, under five thousand.
The five thousand, I'm, and, and just, I, I hate to interrupt.
Sorry.
Out of the streets, got a big old truck.
Right.
You don't have commercial tags, same gross weight. He's parked on the street. I get a ticket because I got commercial tag.
Yeah, right.
Same gross weight.
So that's why that's not fair. And that's why we think that the five thousand limit and above, not just for RVs, not just for boats, not just for trailers, but for things like some people use their dump trucks, some people use their, their, their box trucks, those types of things. Those really shouldn't be on the residential.
I can see that. They should be on them.
Right.
Yeah, they're double wheel, dual wheels and all. They should, maybe.
Right.
You're going today, doing work there, but after that, they shouldn't. But if someone like me would have, was I, I did it. When I first started my business in eighty-sixes, I named it after my, my daughter. When I first started, I had record tax.
Right.
Never bothered. Then you see your Vettner, somebody, maybe somebody didn't like me. I'm going back more than twenty years ago. All of a sudden, they start stopping. We say, you gotta get commercial tags.
Right.
So they gave me a ticket, saying, so, because I had my name on my truck.
Right.
I got commercial tags. I got commercial tags.
Right.
I can't park on the street.
Yeah, so I think that.
If you were to start a gross weight like that, I think we, we would work out well.
Commercial or not, I think it's the, the gross weight. And I, and I appreciate you coming down and talking to us about it.
I want to thank Chief John, uh, Chief Foster for calling me up. I think he called for me. Yeah, he called me up and explained it to me.
Yeah.
And that way made me feel good. And I, I think that he was. I should pick them.
No.
We'll put this, we'll put this on the front burner and get something done in the next two months.
That's true. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Chief, can we, can we?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Nobody doesn't like you here.
Can we postpone any more tickets until we get this ordinance changed? Okay.
That's why I got the warning this time.
Thanks.
So you gotta, yeah, yeah, right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, Andy.
Hi, Andy Starr. I'm not sure whether my address is St. James parking lot or, uh, the Heights. Maybe tonight is, maybe it's St. James tonight. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But it's five hundred North Cambridge is, is our home, home address for Penny and I. Um, tomorrow does begin our sixth farmer's market year. It's hard to believe, but six years and it's, it's just terrific. And Mayor, the fact that you even mentioned it independently on your own is, I guess, emblematic of the kind of support that, um, we all, all forty of us, the volunteers have gotten from the city over these six years. Uh, we touch virtually every department in the city and, um, without exception, everybody is there to support us and be positive and how can we help and how can we do this as, as a partnership? Um, some farmers markets are run by the cities. Brigantine is an example of that. But many are not like ours and that try to work within city organizations. And, uh, we have our tentacles out into a lot of farmers markets in South Jersey and even Pennsylvania and New York. And we talk to a lot of the managers and we've had Zoom calls and um, the, the one thing that, that we're so excited and pleased about is that the, the, the support that we get from the city is, is so much better than what we hear other, other managers talk about, um, in their own cities. Um, and so we just, I just wanted to come and say thank you again. I, it's probably a tired old record saying this, but um, everybody, you know, police, you know, Ed, everybody is just supportive. OEM, Donna, Cindy, Earl Department. Um, everybody is just so supportive and.
I hope to be there tomorrow for your first day. If you don't see me, it's my son had surgery. And if I don't have coverage, I, I can't leave. I have coverage right now. That's why I miss.
Whenever, you know, if you can, that would be great.
I would love to be there, but if you don't, um, and if I.
You want to give your order?
Yeah, if I get there, I might go crazy. Like I might just roll out, but.
If you do, please stop and make sure you say hello.
I will. And if I don't make tomorrow, I will definitely be there, but I don't want you to think that any disrespect.
No, of course not. Of course. Somebody asked this week, will there be another ribbon cutting ceremony? I said, I do remember the first year, I think you all came out and we had a ribbon cutting. I said, no, 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 that's, they do that on the beach for the summer, but that was a one-time event.
Right.
Somebody did ask that question. Um, but we will be selling, the, the city will be selling beach badges, you know, one preseason. I think the city's going to have a booth tomorrow to answer any questions.
Yep.
Um, you know, I don't know if Chief, you're going to be there.
You guys do a great job.
So anyway, I just wanted.
It's a class act.
Thank you.
It is done so classy. It is beautiful. It's run. It's just, it's class.
It's thoughtful too. You've thought out the not having overlap of different vendors, so people can, the vendors can do well.
It's like the no competitive.
When COVID, yeah. When COVID, you had a completely COVID compliant. And it was, uh, in fact, the, I think the health department was giving you kudos for that when they were here. And, and, and just the vibe there. You can tell that all the vendors really like to interact with you and Penny and the rest of the volunteers. Volunteers are fantastic. Um, and the, the vendors themselves, you've just really curated a group that.
Kathy Langriff is a volunteer this year.
Yeah.
She came to our volunteer meeting this week. I'm hoping she'll still be a volunteer.
She's set her alarm for seven AM.
Thank you.
But anyway, I just, again, thank you for being such a great partner. It, it, we can't.
It's our pleasure.
No matter what we're doing, it, it takes, it's a team effort and it, it's, it's great stuff for the city. So thank you again. Kudos to everybody.
Thank you. One thing we forgot to mention was how successful Chef's Night Out was. Lisa reminded.
Oh, okay.
Great night, fast Sunday with great weather, great participation by all our restaurants. More than sold out, yes. Like I was able to get home and get there. Uh, ate way too much halfway through and plowed through and ate. So it was fun. Thanks to Shelley and her volunteers and Lisa was one of the hostesses. So it was kind of nice to see some of our staff out there.
Nice. It was busy.
Yeah.
Great. All right. Is there anybody else from the public? That's right. It's on the Sunday, nine, nine o'clock. Yes.
Thank you.
I was trying to remember my book from home. Thank, I love you too. Okay, we're good? Alrighty.
Any other?
Anybody, anyone else? Yes.
Yep.
At any rate, okay. This time I'm wearing my hat as a homeless person temporarily. Um, Paula DeLuca, S Co-Trustee of Ventnor Memory Park. We were assigned in July of two thousand nineteen, a consolidated address. And it seems to have gone to, it may have gone into the deed as well, because we were acquiring the infill lots of five thousand four, five thousand six, five thousand eight, five thousand ten. And I clicked my heels when I got it back and said, and it said, you're getting a consolidated address of five thousand Ventnor Avenue. Problem is, there's already another five thousand Ventnor Avenue, um, which is the Way of Life Church. And so we have to courier mail every so often. Um, and I'm going to, I'm going to slip pieces of paper across here to go to the Deus, just so, so that this is as fast as possible.
Goes to the clerks. They'll take care of that.
Yeah.
Do order.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do with that. It's just a change of address.
Okay.
So that'll be the clerk.
Yeah, okay. The second thing is, um, if you can pass to the clerk. We had a lot of um, residual things going on into two thousand and twenty-one relating to completion of the Pocket Park and coordinating with um, coordinating with other contractors and deferring our schedule substantially. Um, but what I had, what I don't have is, you know, a, a written certificate of occupancy from building code. So if this can be routed to building code, so that I have like a piece of paper.
Business that should come through those offices.
Yeah, we would.
For.
Because you may have, well, on your benefit, you might have questions then, then we are now answering on your behalf. So during business hours, the clerk and the, and the construction office.
These are just office items that those offices.
Would be better served you.
Okay, the next thing is going to be, um, and Chef's Night Out had a wonderful little finale, desserts, coffee, beverages at the Pocket Park. And we lined up a band when our regular DJ who was going to be a donor uh, to Shelley, got sick. So we went ahead and asked around and located literally on Thursday night at eleven o'clock. And I was walking him through where his plugins would be. But um, a pocket park like this is kind of unusual as far as, it's not like a house where you do an occupancy limit or where there's walls. But I'm, um, I'm not suggesting it was so much the chef's night out, but the night of the holiday parade where the park was made the terminal point. I'm just wondering, have you ever gone ahead and done, has a fire department ever done an occupancy limit assessment for open space? Because it's like sky, there's graphs, there's, you know, there's specimens and walking paths. But if, if there's something that we should know about.
With fire.
With fire, building codes.
That's what I was thinking, fire department?
Yeah.
So part of your, that's a good question for the CO when you get that.
Yeah.
Okay, alrighty. Then I'll go ahead and go into, into that. Um, the next thing, and this is a matter for, um, this is going to continue the signage issue, signage on fence. Um, there's some First Amendment implications to that. Um, and I would really appreciate it if you could confer with city solicitor. Because some of the things, I mean, I sent in a ten dollar check
Who?
To the code office for two small signs, so that we could go ahead and post up our website. This was around the time when, as you know, I'm one of eight who are now running the forum. Uh, we needed eight, had to expand to eight. Good that we have a licensed psychologist in the crew, calms everybody down. But one of the things that, that transpired was um, I got a call back from the code office. And I was told um, your signs are all fine, but they have to be put on the facade of a building. And I said, okay, well, this is kind of like preservation of nature in the midst of, in the, in the midst of, in the midst of density. And that was sort of the whole part, you know, the whole point of increased good beneficial pedestrian traffic, which we're seeing now.
If I could interrupt, what were the signs?
Huh?
Signs, what did the signs say?
The signs just simply said Ventnor Memory Park.
Oh, your signage for the building.
The sign, no, no, the sign, it was, it was a banner sign.
Understood.
But the buildings are recessed at the very back to promote nature at the front.
Right, right.
It's a banner sign.
Allowed to be up for, I think, thirty days for special events.
That's exactly what, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not.
It's not. There's an ordinance that limits the amount of time it could be up a banner.
If it was a permanent sign.
Well, it only went up for forty-eight hours because I got the call and then I was told, no, it had to be attached to the facade of a building. And there was nothing having to do with fences. And right now, I mean, we've got South Jersey players, my gosh, you know, I think that this is like a blessing dropped in our laps. These are local folks and they write, you know, original one-act plays, put on a presentation. They're giving some business to restaurants because this year it's going to be picnic and play. And um, I mean, it's going to be really a nice little event. It'd be wonderful if some signage could go up, you know, thirty days ahead of the event and taken down within ten days. I've been looking around at other municipal ordinances, but I mean, what I was told was.
Do it with Jimmy and see what we can work out. I mean, we allow like um, Santucci puts up for football. They put on their banner across the front of the building, they put a sign up, you know, come watch Monday night football here. And that's up for thirty days and it's got to come down.
It's like, you know, the passing vehicle, because we've got that little sign board and that's great for the pedestrian traffic. But like last year when we had Little Grom's Camp, oh my gosh, that was a joy.
So it doesn't have, doesn't sound like it's an issue as long as you work it, as long as you have them, as long as code, as long as code is aware.
As long as.
Issue I have, I have to work that through.
Got it.
We may have.
It's that facade, it's the facade language, I think, because I know that it's okay on fences of private philanthropic open space uh, in other jurisdictions like Mount Carmel, pardon me?
It's promoted on city property here at Ventnor, but not part of.
Yeah, because I see the signs all over, you know, the city-owned fences, but this is, you know.
This is not city-owned property.
It's not city-owned property, but it is green acres approved from, you know, July of, uh, from fall of twenty nineteen, based on the plans. And now we've executed on the plants we said we would plant. They're all native species. We've gone, we've gone, we've jumped through all the hoops that were there in the detailed plans that were submitted. Um, at any rate, so that was, that's one item that if you can go ahead and if, if you want to have like a little, a little tickler um, to.
It'll have to be amended to the ordinance.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
To Jimmy's.
Okay.
Okay, and then I think that that is its signage on fence. Um, oh, okay. This is a great, great leap of faith, but it has been asked of me. And I have, um, I've met the, the neighbors next door in the duplex and they said they would have never bought there if they didn't have a pretty sight view. So I'm really happy that one point seven million dollars of ratables are now hitting the books of Ventnor. And on the strength of that park, I mean, the park was ninety percent built out when the developer on spec bought that little tiny lot. So that's one of the, the great things, people buy into beauty. Um, I'm, I'm wondering if there's any chance that we could get something that would be a reserved for park on dates and times below sign, two spaces. Gentle treatment of land, gentle treatment of space, gentle treatment of the neighborhood were uppermost in my mind in embarking on this rather ambitious project. And some of the worst is behind me, doing it during a COVID. But I wanted to preserve linear parking space and there has been movement, you know, of commercial traffic from uh, where Brenda's shop is, sometimes into the next, because it's tight. I see where the, the bus stop has been moved. So now there's more space in that commercial block in front of the veterinary hospital. And the bus stop has now been moved to the rear of our block where it's alongside where Luke and the other, uh, the other owner have uh, are sharing each half of the, or doing the duplex thing. So this would just be two parts, spots right in front of the park and they are to meet offloading needs. So.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow, but you're asking for.
This will make it a little.
Spots on a, on a, on a small duration of time?
Exactly.
On certain events.
There's like, yeah, there's like little double-decker signs that my sign guy says he can make and it would just say, you know, reserved parking, reserved for parks
Those are.
On dates or times, dates, times below.
Yeah, that's not really the process, Chief. Would you want to?
What would be the process for doing something with that? In advance from the police department? Oh, okay.
They're not, yeah, they're not, they're not, obviously they're not your parking spot, so we would have to supply the.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, is there a limit of, of what kind of reservations that we have for that sort of thing? I mean, it's kind of thing, we can't give them the parking spots, definitely, or.
Oh, no, we don't, no, no, oh, no. Well, the park closes at ten. No events go on beyond ten in deference to the neighbors needing to. If, this would be in the afternoon.
When does it open?
So, huh?
When does the park open?
So, well, we're going over to, we've, we've had some, we had some issues with, we have sixty-five. In, in fact, uh, Chief Biagi, retired Chief Biagi gave you the, the front gate, uh, non-reproducible uh, or passed to the department. Yeah, the key and also the, the access card. We, the, the, the access card and we, we had some glitches. There was a.
When, when does it open? I didn't catch that.
So, well, it, it opens at nine in the morning.
Okay.
And the access card is used on a secondary gate.
Oh.
And so, and we have more now. We had supply chain difficulties where we ordered two hundred more cards to meet demand in August. And we didn't get them till six months later. I guess they, they come in from abroad. So that's been an issue. So um, and we just call it the, the park, you know, the circle of, the park circle of support. And we give the cards, we, the cards are at cost for the cards and then we just ask for a donation. And anybody who goes in there and wants to let others in is fine. What we do not do though, and this is in deference to the planning board. We had one lady get up and object and say, oh, we're going to be, they're going to be bum sleeping overnight on the benches and all kinds of things are going to be going on. And I said, technology will be the answer. So that's what we're doing. Technology is the answer to, to keep.
I guess to answer your question about the parking permits, then you just need to go through the police department to get those. We can't, we don't, we don't process them here on the bench. We, you would ask the police department for that on certain events.
It's a special event parking.
Special event parking.
We did it for the, we did it for uh, the Chef's Night Out and we did it for other community events.
Yeah.
Kind of thing.
Oh, okay. Yeah, great. Okay, well, thank you. I think that, um, that kind of wraps it up then. And I'll drop some of these other things off in City Hall tomorrow and pursue that with the uh, the building inspection office. Because it was just, I mean, I was basically being told no, because you don't fit with it. There's like a gap of what the ordinance does not provide for as far as the fence. And then that was like in September or October. And then in April, I got a little, it was the cutest little thing. It was a, it was an envelope from City Hall and it had my uncashed check and a, and a post-it note. We never cashed it. That was it. Don't know how, who's in it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming out tonight, Paul. Anyone else?
Come back. This is Rick Santoro, three oh four North Washington Avenue, Ventnor. Because I'm here tonight, I have another comment, if I can, I can just.
Sure.
The comment. I want to commend Ventnor for the way Ventnor's operated, the level of professionalism. I've had interaction with every single department here, police, public works, um, construction department, code enforcement, uh, beach patrol. My son was a badge checker. Last year he loved it. He's, he's ruined now from a customer service perspective. And I just, I just want to.
It's a tough job.
Tell you how, how privileged we are to live in this beautiful community. And I want to commend uh, not only, not only the executive branch, but all the department heads and the employees that work here because this is a incredible, beautiful place to live and we're very, very lucky and fortunate to live here. And you do a great job managing.
We have a great team.
Managing this uh, city for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thanks.
Maybe the most important uh, business you've heard all night, but.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Rick.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Hey, do I have a motion to a portion?
Motion to a vote.
Oops, sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Tim? Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Oh, wait, we have Zoom.
Oh, is there someone on Zoom?
Yeah, I just wanted to give them an opportunity if they wanted to speak at all.
There was nobody up there.
You said there was no one there.
They, they came in late, they came in late, right as the public portion started, so actually the one just left, so. Um, is there anybody in Zoom who wishes the speaker coming in, any item? Nope, doesn't look like it.
No, it didn't look like it.
Oh, yeah, one last thing. This is uh, apparently your last meeting, Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Reynolds, moving on up.
Nominee for our county prosecutor. This seems to be the stepping stone for great things here in the county.
Yeah, well.
Why are you? Where are you going? You're not allowed to go anywhere.
I'm staying.
You're staying, Mark.
Do we get a couple of like guest appearances, like, you know?
But thank you. So if I could actually address the mission officially.
Absolutely.
Be great. Because one of the things that I've said throughout my journey to actually get this job is that talents like Ventnor, Galway, Regent were instrumental in my, my personal development, my professional development. Uh, and put me in possession really to succeed like that way. And Ventnor, all the way back to two thousand seventeen, and Galway right after two thousand eighteen, the last five years of my life, Lance knows, based on my brother's heart attack. Uh, we saw our number of down, we survived it. Uh, it put a lot of things in perspective and it focused me to not only be a better person, a better parent, but a better prosecutor. And I think I actually emailed you guys at one point, like one o'clock in the morning.
Yep.
Right? Because with respect, you, you guys hired me, right?
Yeah, I remember.
And showed a lot of confidence and Chief Foster and I worked together in that room. What really happened was uh, we saw an opportunity, we collectively, both Chief Foster and I, and Ben, Ben Judging, that was now coastless. And that we collectively really used, missed, we're helping them. And you guys, you know, collectively gave us that opportunity. And then what really transpired was the last four years, confidence build, relationships build. And then, I mean, relationships, and you guys are not on course, right? I mean, relations on both sides of the aisle. And it really came to fruition, but it was the confidence that counts at Ventnor and Galway. And for that, I'm most grateful and I'm humbled by the opportunity. And as I said in Galway on Tuesday night, that this isn't me moving on, this is me having an opportunity to help more people. And uh, Tim, you hit on it, the government meeting, special guest appearances. When I met with the governor face to face and the attorney general face to face and had conversations with them, they looked right at me and said, you are now the face of law enforcement in Land County.
Hmm.
And we want you in the public. We want you at local council meetings, at local events, churches, schools, community events. So I am going to serve the public and give them access and treat them fairly and do justice for everyone. And actually, you know, live up to all the promises that we're supposed to make as prosecutors to actually solve the problems, protect the public, make Land County both better, better, safer and more fair for everybody. Ultimately, that's what Chief Foster and I did in the back room here. And this is just a greater opportunity for all that. I thank you guys for instilling that.
Thanks, Will.
Thank you.
Mr. [inaudible]. A bittersweet.
Yeah.
Still got more. Who I babysat.
It's been a pleasure, really. It has been.
Thanks, thanks.
So, did I do? Yes, you will be met.
Miss, you, Miss Brown, but. See you on the other side. And, and just for the record, I actually started on the sixth. Uh, I'm being appointed through the attorney general's office. And uh, I'll be hired through the agent's office, assigned to the prosecutor's office, serve as acting until I get through the Senate. We anticipate going through the Senate judiciary on June thirteenth and then through sometime immediately there. So maybe one month.
Wonderful.
Great.
It's been, it's been an incredible journey in Ventnor, played a large part.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right. Did I do adjourn already?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Do I, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.